Here he always messes me up. It is time, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here, calling the meeting to order. On the last regular meeting in January for the City Council, we will begin as we always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and the community invocation. Please stand and join me in honoring our national symbol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you, Lord, that you were on your throne. We thank you also, Lord, that you have established governments. And for those that are serving the City of Emmett, Lord, we thank you for their service. Thank you, Father, for how you have been faithful in leading them and guiding them over the years. And we pray that you would do that tonight. May you lead them and guide them, Father, in the decisions that are before them. May your favor be upon them such that they receive a blessing tonight and that they are a blessing to others. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
We have a full vote tonight. Okay, so don't rock the boat, okay? Are there any good faith amendments to the agenda? I'm gonna... It's not really an amendment per se. I'm gonna have our esteemed Council tell us about B versus C.
Sure. So, the resolution under 8C is actually the approval of 8B. So, you don't need to do it twice. You just need to do it once under 8B. 8C, clear as mud?
8C.
8C is the only thing you need to do.
Okay.
Red and full. That's the way the department wants it. Well...
Can I do it with my radio voice?
Please do.
Okay. So, take B off your program. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Has anyone been contacted by anybody about any issue on the agenda tonight? Any declarations of any discussion outside of this meeting tonight? All right. Well, it is time for a young officer to be sworn in. Now, I want to make sure, Gunner, that I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. I'll tell you how it should be pronounced, and then you tell me how you pronounce it. It should be pronounced Christopherson.
You are correct.
Oh, okay. Well, then you can come up. Why don't you bring your family, too? Being a police officer is a family deal. Now, before we begin, I want you to turn and face your accusers because I understand you had a checkered past...
Yeah.
...with the Seahawks.
I didn't.
Why don't you tell us about that?
Well, what do you want to know?
What's your checkered past with the Seahawks? Did you play for them?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, what did you do?
I worked for them. I managed the mascot.
So, let me see if I can get this straight.
It's about as good as it gets.
The dude that wears the bird outfit?
Oh, yeah.
You had to manage him?
Oh, yeah. You know, keep him safe and all that.
How does that work, exactly?
Follow him from a distance, make sure no one gets a hold of him.
So, you were his bodyguard?
Basically.
You were the bodyguard for the Seahawks mascot?
Yeah.
Were you paid handsomely for that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Seattle wages, you know?
Okay, good. Well, we're happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
Talk to Chief Kunkka, he's happy to have... Wait, no. We only take the best. And I can tell that you're gonna fit in very nicely. Well, we have... Is this your brother and your sister?
Not quite.
Oh, your cousins?
Well, almost. It's Mom and Dad.
Oh, Mom and Dad, come on over. And let's have... Yeah, you can be there.
Okay.
And for photo purposes, is this being documented?
Okay.
And so what I'm going to do is I'm gonna administer the oath. Then afterwards, I'm gonna have you sign it twice. Now, one, I'll give to you. Probably you should have Mom proceed, keeping...
Sure.
You're gonna lose it.
Yeah.
And then I'll give one to the Chief, okay?
All right.
All right, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, please raise your right hand. I, Gunner Christopherson...
I, Gunner Christopherson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
...the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The State of Idaho.
The State of Idaho.
And the laws and ordinances...
And the laws and ordinances.
...of the City of Emmett.
Of the City of Emmett.
And that I will...
And that I will.
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...faithfully perform...
Faithfully perform.
...all the duties...
All the duties.
...of a police officer...
Of a police officer.
...for Emmett, Idaho.
For Emmett, Idaho.
And throughout my continuance therein.
And throughout my continuance therein.
All right, for better or worse, you're in, right? Do you have an official pen?
I do not.
Yeah, then we'll... We'll give you this VFW pen.
Oh, wow.
And you can keep that.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, my gosh. Kunkka's already told you how to sign the tickets? What does that even say?
Fast, move on to the next one.
Good grief. All right, well, that's fine. I mean, your name's gonna be printed on it anyway.
Right.
They can figure... Oh, no, here, you keep that. So, this is... Give this to Mom.
All right.
And this is for the Chief. And what's that? All your friends and neighbors and is the... Is the... Yeah, get a picture. Is the mascot here to be...
No, the mascot's not here.
And was it the fake Seahawk or the real Seahawk? Was it the real bird or the fake?
Oh, it was the fake.
The bad bird, yeah.
Come this way. Lyle? Come over this way. And then you get the seal and everything.
Oh, boy. Oh, my Lord, Lyle. Driving you out.
All the chairs are all spew.
No council supporting it.
They don't want to see the pictures.
The officers want to come up, the three in the back there? You guys want to come up?
Yes.
Come on.
It's not like your soul is stolen.
Actually, there are three trainers, two FTOs, and there's a third FTO's injured, but he's been working with them a lot, training them how to use that taser, so that's good.
Awesome.
Welcome aboard.
Good job. That's perfect.
He used to work for the media.
You don't have to stay.
You don't have to stay.
We won't make you. Thank you.
Go Seahawks.
All right, Council, does anyone have anything, any announcements for the good of the order? We have the consent agenda. It's the... No approval of amendments, huh? Well, I guess we'll get them the next time. We have the accounts payable. Councilor Nebrekir came in and paid all the bills today. Thank you, Councilor. And then we have Gabriella Harmon and Tori Palaio. Anyone know them? Have a good relationship? No? Sheriff Leonard Kinnan motion with regard to the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay?
Second?
All right, thank you. Main motion has been made by Councilor Ruzinkin to accept the consent agenda as presented. And the second was made by President Tonah Henson. So, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed. All ayes. Six, zero, motion carries. All right, this is the favorite time that we have all year because Megan comes and tells us about our triple IA. Sounds like something a cowboy would say.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor and Council, thank you for having me today. My name is Megan Smith. I am the Wellness and Data Director for the triple IA. And today we'll be going over the annual report for the 2324 year. So, we run on a 10-1 plan year, so this is in review of last year. On the first page, we have our mission and vision and just some highlights. So, we have over... We have 114 agencies now across the state, over 2,400 employees, and cover over 6,400 lives in the state. Our annual budget is about 3 point... Or 37.6 million. We had 98% participation in our wellness screenings. We had a little over 2.2 million in program savings this year. So, I'll touch more on all of those things. On page two, we just highlight all of our agencies. Anything with a blue asterisk, our new agencies that joined this last year. We are governed by a Board of Trustees. We have 13 trustee members, and our Chair is Dan Hammond out of City of American Falls. And we are very honored that City of Emmett has been with us since 2019. Okay. Page four, we just have a review of our team. We now have nine staff members. And then a breakdown of kind of where our budget goes. 89% of funds spent is directly towards claims, so medical, dental, vision, mental health. 6% is our TPA administration, so this is renting the networks from our carriers. 1% for contractors, and then a combined of 3% for staff and operations. Administering and operation expenses to the right there, we just show kind of our trend over the last four years. We did have a transition year this last year. We put into place new accounting software, but still had an accountant on staff, so it went up a little bit, but we plan to see that go back down. A few member relation key points. We have a benefits line that goes to one of our staff members up above. This is a 24/7 line. We had over 5,500 calls into this last year. We run 11 benefits internally, and we typically do that to try to save funds. And we sponsor 11 conferences across the state. Quick highlight on finance. We received about 1.9 million in RX rebates last year, about 34,000 in subrogation, which is third-party liability reimbursements. Our stop-loss premium, which is catastrophic insurance that we're required to purchase, went up about 16% just due to some high claims that I'll touch on later. We earned about 161,000 in interest. And our IBNP reserves, this is incurred but not paid, which is required by the Department of Idaho Insurance to be set aside, is about 2.9 million. So, this equates to about three months of runout claims. Our budget growth across the bottom here, and that's just really due to growth of the trust. On page six, we touch on our medical plan. Last year, we provided information on the triple IA to 46 agencies. We medically rated 25 of those agencies. We had 12 join. Fortunately, we had to decline five agencies, just they might be too big of a risk to join our trust. And we now... One small agency is now able to offer additional benefits, whether that's dental or vision. And then the chart on the left there just talks a little bit about our renewal. We always recommend you guys budget about 10% just for really inflation, which medical and pharmacy inflation is anywhere from 6% to 7% per year. And our goal is with programs we're putting in place is just really coming below that. So, you can see our trend was 6.2 for average over the five years compared to Idaho trend was 6.5. And then just growth of our agencies across the bottom. Page seven will touch on our high claimants and our stop-loss. So, we purchase a stop-loss deductible for $450,000 for each individual on our plan. So, what that means is that for that certain plan year, if the single member has over $450,000 in claims, then our stop-loss kicks in, and all of that claims past $450,000 is reimbursed by our carrier. As you can see on this chart, these are high-cost claimants. We had 31 claimants over $100,000 last year. Four of those hit stop-loss. Member number one was our highest claimant the trust has ever had, came in and about paid at $4.1 million. I can state that two of those members have now termed. And then the repeat claimants that are highlighted orange, those are claimants that we're really keeping an eye on and trying to put programs into place just to really help mitigate their costs. Any questions on any of those pages? Okay. Next page, we touch on our medical programs, so stuff we're putting in place to really save money. Maternity program, we have a medication infusion program. Telehealth, which is one of our... Really, the best benefits we offer because it's directly to two Idaho-based nurse practitioners that contract with us. We had over 4,100 calls to them this last year. Estimated savings, about 300,000. We, you know, assume they would either go to the ER or urgent care, which is much more expensive. Digital physical therapy, almost saved about half a million dollars. And then our co-pay assistance program saved us over a million dollars. So, this is a pharmaceutical program for specialty medications. Wellness screenings, we have two... Like I mentioned, two Idaho-based nurse practitioners that come to every agency and do preventative health wellness screenings. We screened over 1,100 members last year. We had 101 agencies participate, so City of Emmett did participate. Findings from last year, we had some elevated PSAs, positive Cologuard's, type 2 diabetes diagnosis, and then a few... Quite a few elevated lipid panels. So, all of these members receive referrals or just really recommendations from the providers. So, it's nice because if members don't have a primary care physician, they can use our providers just to really manage their... Any conditions or just really help prevent conditions. Something new we've put into place is dermatological skin checks. So, during our screenings, we're having a dermatologist or a dermatologist PA come on site and help screen. We had last year found four possible melanomas, two stage-one melanomas, and then 15 non-melanoma skin cancers. So, one of those claims alone, you know, if it gets to a later stage, can cost us pretty much what this whole program costs us to run. So, prevention is very important. So, we're very happy to have the city participate, and just you guys have great participation rates, so. Next page is dental and vision plan. You can see we have less members on these, both of these plans. As, you know, hopefully groups are able to start adding these benefits, but you can see our renewals over the last five, four years... Five years, sorry. Triple IA renewals, 1.5 for vision. First trend was 4.5. And for vision, it was 5.9. First Idaho was 4.9. The only reason it's higher, like a 14 and a 15% for vision, is that we have to increase that rate by a full dollar. So, really, over the last five years, this has only increased $2. Page 12, we touch on our mental health plan, which is now our largest benefit. So, we sell this plan as a standalone benefit now where they... Members used to... Agencies used to have to be on our medical plan in order to purchase this. So, we have groups like sheriff departments or first responder departments that might have other medical coverage, but they're purchasing our mental health plan just because we've made a lot of headway in Idaho with this. So, some of the big components of this plan is that we have a 24/7 first responder and family helpline. So, this is a direct line that goes to providers we have hired, and they're all culturally competent to be working with first responders. So, last year, we had 224 calls into this helpline. Five of those were crisis calls. We came on site and did seven critical incident debriefs. We had 30 members inpatient, and 40... We have 48 first responder providers that are specific to just be working with first responders. And then for basic members, we have over 280 providers to be working with non-first responders. So, we also offer onsite mental health and wellness trainings, Wellness Wednesday webinars. So, we're just really trying to help meet people where they're at to just help them focus on their physical and mental health. And that is it. On the back, we just touch on a few things that were... Have started since October 1. A big one is Smith RX. We moved our pharmacy to a new program. And this pharmacy network uses Amazon. Mark Cuban has Cost Plus Pharmacy, so we've seen significant savings with this program. We have a new financial institute, new enrollment and billing software. And then we're also creating regional mental health and wellness teams so that if you're ever needing a team of providers to come on site, we have one in the area that's ready to go. So, any questions I can answer? All right. Good. That's my job. I can collect those unless you'd like to pick one.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
So, thank you. All right, is Ray Bautz here? Ray, come on down. This is the time for you to discuss with the Council. There's no action can be taken because it's not on the action.
Okay, it's great.
But apparently you want a waiver for sidewalk, curb, and gutters on 966 East 12th. So, it's gonna be a heavy lift for you to explain why you should have that waiver...
I'll try to best I can.
Since there's a house less than a block from you that was required to have curbs and gutter on Moffett, and we anticipate a subdivision coming in...
I understand that.
...very near your location that will be required, curbs and gutter.
Yes.
And our whole concept in the last several years has been getting away from these waivers, but you may have a good idea, so. The floor is yours.
I'll do my best. Good evening. I'm here this evening requesting City Council member to approve my request for a waiver to provide curb, gutter, and sidewalks and road widening along my property line, which is on Moffett Avenue and 12th on the corner, as allowed by City Code Section 718-2B, which states the requirement for the installation of curb, gutter, and sidewalk may be waived by the City Council when the applicant owner has established that any of the following conditions exist. Rule number one says for streets with a rideaway width of 50 feet or less, no sidewalks are located on the same side of the street within 100 feet of the subject site. My property easily meets that requirement as there are no sidewalks the entire length of Moffett extending onto 7th Street, continuing on around the corner of Emmett Middle School onto 6th Street, all the way to Washington Avenue on either side of those streets. You'll notice on pictures, images 5, 7, and 9, it shows that, that there are no sidewalks other than the one that you speak of. Rule number two, my current property along... Let's see, rule number two, I need to read that. In blocks where the average street frontage of a lot is over 100 feet, sidewalks on only one side of the street may be allowed. Okay, so my current property along Moffett Avenue is 32955.55 feet long, and properties on both sides of the street are also over 100 feet in length. My current plan is to split the property into two sections, that one will be approximately 180 feet for me to construct a new home for ourselves and sell the existing home that will have approximately... Still end up with 149 feet of frontage on Moffett Avenue. Item number three, a negative drainage impact is determined by the Public Works Department will be created due to the construction of pros curb and gutter. The natural grade of this area on this street has a north-to-south slope, allowing existing irrigation systems to function. If new sidewalks and gutters were to be constructed along the 180-foot frontages, the excess water from the gutter system would directly drain into the driveway and possibly the garage area located on the... Which is my house on the corner currently, my house on Moffett and 12th. Plus, along with the new probable new fence was to be installed dividing the properties, I believe serious water damage would eventually occur to new fencing install that would define property lines. With a 13-foot of road widening plus a 7-foot of width required for the sidewalk and gutter system, my property would be set back 20 foot from the existing road and property frontage. Basically, I end up losing almost 4,000 square feet of property. Basically, this sidewalk would be like the proverbial bridge that goes to nowhere, ending into the adjacent property fences, making this realistic sidewalk unusable. If you'll notice image eight and nine there, and there's a couple pylons there that I've kind of set up there where it shows where the existing new sidewalks would be. And you can see it runs into almost the gravel driveway in their house. And the other end, it runs into the neighbor's fence on the north end of the property. So, like I say, to me, it starts from nowhere and goes to nowhere. And I don't ever see it change, changing. Number four says an obstruction exists, i.e. irrigation box, trees, etc., which will not allow for the placement of a curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Currently, I do have an irrigation ditch with boxes installed along the northeast side of property for 100 feet, plus another attached ditch on the north end of the property extending to the west end of the property. I have still do and pay for two and a quarter shares for irrigation water rights for over 30 years. I also admit rent down here, if you notice images three and four, shows the pictures of the large canal that crosses 12th Street, which would be at the... Be at the south end of the property where the new large subdivision goes on. I would imagine it would cost a small fortune to widen that road at that part and create... Dig up that road and create an aqueduct for the water, that canal irrigation water, to continue on that property. I mean, I foresee when they... That new subdivision is built, and they have the setbacks in there, basically, they're gonna have to build, I imagine, like you can see on 7th Street, a big solid barrier so people don't pull out and pull right into that irrigation. It's where you can see the person's pump sitting there at the current time. Let's see here. So, this kind of ends that part of it. And that kind of ends my four reasons why I feel I qualify for those things. I mean, because the street... Moffett Street does run downhill from north to south, because that's where my irrigation is getting used to go or do go and irrigated. I've lived there for over 30 years. Putting a sidewalk there, and also from the top of that driveway down there, because it's poorly built 90 years ago, it drains down to the right into the garage. And I didn't put the pictures in. I have them on the phone where Tom's place, the one that did, he was required to put in sidewalks, not by his choice. I showed pictures, but it's already even his short sidewalk, and it's draining probably creating problems to the property next to me that's right across from me. As a testament, I'd like to add a personal statement, if you please. As a second-generation Idaho native, Vietnam-era veteran, we moved to Boise, Emmett, in 1997 and purchased a rural home at 966 East 12th Street. We thought Boise was getting too big back then. For approximately 20 years, we were outside the city limits, having none of the normal services provided by the municipality other than a sewer hookup. Which is fine by us since being annexed into the city limits. I have to honestly say, we haven't gained any service, but our property taxes did double. Up until 2016, we were part of the daily over-the-hill commuter spending 10 hours a day from a home or working completely out of the area as my construction career dictated. Now that we're retired, we have especially in the last few years seen a tremendous amount of growth in traffic on 12th Street, as you all know. With the last of the existing farmland around us disappearing very soon, 12th Street will become a major east-west corridor road. As our front porch, the way the house is set, where we'd like to spend a lot of time is currently only 30 feet from 12th Street. The traffic noise is becoming unbearable and only going to get much worse. Like I say, when we worked 10 hours a day and gone, it didn't make that much difference because we were home after everybody else was. City ordinance says won't allow us to build adequate fencing to improve private... City ordinance says won't allow us to build adequate fencing to improve privacy or noise deference. I would also like to add that when our new neighbor bought a one-acre tract up and across the street from me, he didn't realize that city water, sewer, gas lines, and power were not readily available, as was insinuated by his real estate agency that he purchased from. He was forced to pay a private commercial contractor to install a city-required 8-inch water line and sewer line installation at a cost of nearly $90,000. I granted him a right-of-way on a handshake for the contractor to install a new city water line along my property line, with having to remove six trees on my property so that, not having to replace nearly 500-foot of roadway, because they would have to dig it up, if I didn't give him a right-of-way to go through there, he would. I invested $15,000 of my own money to help with the associated costs, including having a 4-inch sewer line extended inside my property on the north end, believing I would be building a new home soon. That was nearly two years ago. And actually, that $15,000, I really didn't have to pay because I know that there's a, basically, a $5,000 fee you pay for a city sewer hookup. They come out and dig it up and stick it in my property, the same thing with water. I've actually already had that work done, so I'll still be paying the $5,000 fee, hookup fee, but the work is already done. I got a 4-inch line stubbed into the new side of the property. Going forward, I totally understand and support our town shift's perspective that commercial, large real estate developers, private equity firms should bear the cost of infrastructure development for the massive amounts of homes and commercial properties and developments, not putting the burden on existing taxpayers, homes, and renters. That would be socialism supporting capitalism. I would also like to point out that I am vigilant, wanting only to add a single home on my land that I've owned for 30 years. The research that I have for estimates to provide 180-foot of sidewalk, road widening, would cost me nearly $40,000. That's not including them to pay to raise property height nearly two feet, because the road's much higher than the property, because it was all farming lands where everything was below the irrigation ditch, which runs along 12th Street, to come up to the road height. I haven't got a bid on that part, what it cost me to build that two feet up and compact it and everything that needs to be done before the sidewalks even start. Because this acreage is underdeveloped, I found that with local government fees, natural gas line, power line extensions, water and sewer hookup fees, plus survey fees, I'm looking at close to $100,000 of cost before we even start any phase of actual home construction, because this area is totally underdeveloped, you know, and has been, you know. Now, as a private equity firm, like if I were Brightview, like building a subdivision down the street on 12th Street, and wanting to cram as many homes as possible on my one and third acre, that could be a separate scenario. It'd be quite affordable for that corporation to split the cost among the eight possible homes at $500,000 a piece, you know, $4 million that could be built. That being said, my neighborhood is an existing lower-middle income area, already established, semi-developed, not the large agriculture farm acreage now being bought out by the out-of-state developers. My neighborhood, like many in Emmett, will always be what they are, imposing me and others in like neighborhoods to comply with a strict, no common sense policy serves no redeeming quality. And I would also like to point out that, let's see, which picture is that? You can see the houses on the corners there on picture seven and six, or three existing homes have been built in the last 10 years ago. They were granted exemptions from having to put curbs, sidewalks, and gutter. And I was told that was done by a previous administration, and they wouldn't allow it now. Well, I kind of look back and it's, well, maybe they used a little more common sense looking at the whole neighborhood, what it is for what it is. If you'll notice on picture one, that's my neighbor's house across the street. There was an old white house, he was required, they were wanting him to build sidewalks, curbs, and gutters. And he decided to go around that and remodel that house. So he doesn't have to do it. And if you'll notice on picture two, what he did do to get a variance around it, he's actually two homes there now, he built a hallway over and connected to the garage and built a 2,000 square foot behind it. None of that now is required, curbs, gutter, and sidewalks across, but he's got an exemption for it. Number two, let's go here, you can see down the streets down there, those two pictures of the pylons, that's where the gutter could go. Item number 10, as this says on there, this is a new home, it was built this year, well, 2024, late, on 353 East 12th Street. He hasn't been required to put any, he's got an exemption somehow there. I inquired and asked about this, he says, well, first time I asked about it, they didn't know, when I first went in, my first interview. Later on, in a phone call, he told me, well, someday they'll have to come back and put a pathway there. Not fencing, not sign there, and everything else built outright to the road. I don't know if that's ever going to happen. If you looked at the house left and right, it's totally unfeasible. So I don't know if you're going to be an LLC to get an exemption or what, but I really feel that, from our circumstance, and like I say, I fully agree that, you know, the city's got a 10, over a $10 million budget, and we have never built any curb, gutter, and sidewalks in this town without a grant from the federal government. So I don't expect me, as a private citizen retired, to come up with $40,000 to build a sidewalk, curb, and widen road, pay for city payment, to do that when it's, like I said, for me, sidewalk, because with existing homes, they're not going anywhere for the next 50, 80 years, 100 years, unless there's, you know, bombings or a fire like LA, they have to rebuild everything. So that's all, I'm just asking for a little bit of common sense to this, I mean, to use the distance.
Do you have any questions, any councilman?
Mayor?
Yes.
On two, eight, and nine, you have a fatality.
Yes.
Is your property on the corner of 7th, I mean, 12th and Moffett?
Yes, sir.
And your property built towards Moffett or you, you're the widest part, towards on Moffett or towards on 12th Street?
Do I want to know?
Where's the widest area, is it on Moffett or on 12th Street?
Moffett. That's the 397 feet, yes.
So your house would be built on Moffett?
Yes, on the very north end of that property, that, up there where you see the, well, if you look at the picture number nine, you can see the trees up there along there that border by property line there, and I want to put that house, I'm trying to get off as far off of 12th Street as I possibly can.
And what measures do you have there?
It's one and a third.
One and a third?
One and a quarter, 1.32 or something like that. And like I say, the other picture, number eight, that's within a foot or two, those pylons, I set those and measured off, going off of Tom's property where he set back and took the same measurements and moved them off what is required to go through. And you can see that driveway would go right in the middle of that yard, running right, almost into the, well, run into that maple tree, just north, it'd be, just missed the maple tree, the angle's a little bit off. And then there's that tall tree, there's a giant sequoia. I'm really going to miss those, you know, it's been 30 years. That maple tree there, well, not the maple tree, but the other pine tree back there, we planted that back when we first moved there, it was our first Christmas tree, you know, there's a lot of nostalgia in there. If the house was turned and built another way, if there was any possible way to do something different with it, I would, but it's just like, now, we sit on that front patio there and with the ATVs, we go from the subdivisions, there are Albertson runners, stuff like that, I mean, you can't even sit out there and listen to Sunday football game, and it just, you know, I'd really like a little better quality of life here. And I've actually honestly looked around to buy them somewhere else, you know, and then you look at these other subdivisions, they're built seven feet apart and where you can shake hands out your bathroom window, and that's not what I want. I'm born and raised here, I'm used to more of the open space. I don't want to live in a subdivision to pay them $60, $80 a month to tell me what color to paint my house and what day I need to mow my yard. And with this, I think I get my individual freedom to do what I want.
I'm agent, also, it has that clear on your text.
Yeah, I took that, I waited too late in the afternoon.
Is your home the one that says it back, do you see the roof line at that yard?
Yes, yes. And I can say that house now, from the other front door, or the end of that porch, is only 30 feet from off of 12th Street. And if they ever widened that, it'd even be closer. And there's a couple homes down there, I mean, there's, like I say, the lower-middle-income class, but there's actually a couple billionaires that live on that street also. But in Tom, in his case, he bought that property and sold his home in Eagle, it's originally from California, and bought that and was under, you know, the impression that all the services we paid there. So he paid his $200,000, he paid for that property back when everything peaked out there during COVID. And so, and then he started and then found out, well, the water line isn't there, the sewer is not, I mean, he was thinking it was stubbed into the property, and it was assumed it was, because on the paperwork, it's city service, I mean, like natural gas. I called it intermountain gas, they want me to pay $18,000 to extend the gas line, and I have to pay for it clear to the end of the property to get even natural gas. The Idaho Power Company, there's not adequate telephone poles close enough, and I've got different varying bids to go different ways, I mean, anywhere from $13,000 to $17,000 just to get power poles there. But, you know, it's like, but I've, honestly, I've looked at other places, I mean, like I say, I love Emmett, I've been here a long time, and wife loves us here, and it's just, and there's, look around, there's just nowhere to go. I mean, either you gotta own five acres out here and be from an out-of-state to come in here with $3 million, so you can buy five acres and build your 3,000 square foot home, or you're stuck in these cookie cutter subdivisions, I don't want that.
You got a question for you. You said you helped put in the power or the water sewer and gas line?
No, there's no gas line now at all. In fact, Tom, right now, has been putting on propane, waiting for it, anticipating they come, because he didn't have the $18,000. And actually, honestly, he's hoping that when the new subdivision's going down the street from us, that they will be paying to extend the gas line there so we can get off of it. Now propane is costing a fortune in that house. But it was basically, you know, if he had to do it over again, he wouldn't have bought the property, honestly. It just, luckily, he was well, I mean, his house right now, inside his house, it's virtually almost bankrupted him. He said, you go inside his house right now, he's got keyless, it's a very nice-looking house, and he's a great bricklayer, blockman, did a lot of work himself. Luckily, he had the construction equipment, friends to build and develop it, and he did his own foundation work. But inside his house, he's still got keyless corset sockets for light fixtures, because he just can't afford anything anymore, because it's costing him so much money, other than what he, above and beyond what he had. He sold his house for X amount of many dollars at Eagle, put half of it at 200,000, and then they're coming out here and, like I say, $90,000 just to get water and sewer for one person. And like I say, my house, you know, if I was going to build that, divide that, and I could put six homes in there, then I could see, you know, sure, that you divided around all the costs, but that's not what I intend to do, nor I ever intend to do. In fact, I'm actually allowing, hoping this, when my time passes and stuff like that, my daughter and them live in Wyoming, and she wants to come back to Boise really bad or this area out there, and I'm willing it to her so she can live there, you know, but anyway, that's too personal. Any other questions from the council, from Mr. Fattis? All right, thank you, sir. You take it.
Does staff wish to make any statement at this time? We can't make a decision tonight because it's not on the agenda for action item, but does staff have anything? The packet has a letter from Director Fremeyer.
We'll just hold.
Did you want to say? Stephen Fremeyer, who's our director of public works.
We'll just, any of our statements we can hold till it goes to action.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can we ask any questions of staff, just to clarify a few things?
Sure.
Maybe Brian first, if I could ask Brian. I know you don't probably know this yet, but you know that that's under pathway between 7th and 12th on Moffett. Is that, do you know the potential?
The potential is very likely is moving forward. I actually have been in communication with the development company that is looking at purchasing it, Eldridge Development, LLC is who's looking at it. They're doing all their due diligence right now on the cost of everything with hookups and things like that, but I actually got an email from her today asking about the participation in the lift station improvements and the 12th Street light improvement, what those costs are. So it's, it's moving forward.
Now, when we approved that potential development, do they have to come back again or is that still in effect?
The preliminary plat has been approved, and they've got extensions on that preliminary plat to continue moving forward with it, so it does not expire.
Okay, so that could stay with the same requirements we had, which was widening the road?
Correct. Yeah, those, those requirements always stay there unless it was to expire, and then somebody would pick it up and we changed our standards, then we could put additional standards there, or new standards.
So the standards we had back then is still in play?
That is correct. Yes.
Thank you. And then the little house across, without the curb, gutter, and sidewalk? Because their existing enrollment just remodeling, there's no requirement?
That is correct, it was an addition on that home. If you remember, he came to you before that to ask for a waiver, and we denied the waiver, and then he found out that you could just do an addition, and that doesn't pertain to that.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
To be continued. Going on to the non-consent agenda. Eight-eight, approve the airport fuel station lease agreement. Mr. Fremeyer, you're back. I'll be up here for a little bit. Yes, you will.
It's the Steve show.
Okay, so I'm actually requesting a motion to approve the lease agreement between Nadine Barak and the City of Emmett. It's the fuel, for the fuel station, Nadine is actually Steve's widow, so it's kind of like our hanger lease on last council.
Council have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, do we lease that property that that's on to them, or do we just get a percentage of the fuel?
We are leasing the property. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Sure, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
I made a motion to approve the lease agreement between Nadine Barak and the City of Emmett, with the mayor to sign.
Second. Second by Counselor Butler, the made motion having been made by Counselor Harris to approve the lease agreement to the packet between Nadine Barak and the City of Emmett with the mayor to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this being a contract, and I'll take a roll call vote. President Henderson.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler.
Yay.
Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Counselor Harris.
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Counselor Ruzinkin.
Yay.
Six yays, no nays. Motion passes unanimously. The next item, jumping to C, is to approve resolution R. 2025-01, the City of Emmett accepting the grant offer of the state of Idaho through the Idaho Transportation Department, Division of Aeronautics. And it's my understanding that not only will we encapsulate which council, when counselor introduced the motion, but I will actually read the resolution. So you can say your voice. I know you've been scratching.
Yeah.
So what else do you have to say?
Just for...
What is this about exactly?
So it's to help, where we're getting a grant, the amount, the maximum amount of 32,500, to help with updating the airport master plan to help the airport grow and...
Is there a motion on the resolution?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. So the state has to grant a 32,500, will they match in C?
Yes.
An in-kind match or is that a financial match? Do you know on that?
I actually hadn't really read through it, because it was before my time.
So this is, I'm sorry, this is probably a manual?
It's a matched state, so I would guess we just match the 32, yeah, the financial.
Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve grant agreement Idaho Airport Aid Program, State Fiscal Year 26, to update airport master plan FS program number SP018-25, project number L258S78, with the state's maximum obligation of $32,500 to match the City of Emmett's $32,500 with the mayor to sign.
All right. The, and it says councilman, but it was actually President Henderson, move to approve the grant agreement Idaho Airport Aid Program, State Fiscal Year 26, to update the airport master plan FS program number SP018-25. airport master plan FS program number SP-018-25, project number L-258-S-78, with the state's maximum obligation of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, to match the city's thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars with the mayor to sign. With the resolution reading as follows. President Tona Henderson introduced the following resolution, which was read in full, considered, and adopted. Resolution number R. 2025-01 of City of Emmett, Idaho, accepting the grant offer of the State of Idaho through the Idaho Transportation Department, Division of Aeronautics, in the maximum amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, to be used under the Idaho Airport Aid Program, FS program number SP-018-25, project number L-258-S-78, in the development of the Emmett Municipal Airport, and be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Emmett, Idaho, herein referred to the city as follows. Section one, that the city shall accept the grant offer of the State of Idaho in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of obtaining state aid under FS program SP-018-25, project number L-258-S-78, in the development of the Emmett Municipal Airport, and section two, that the mayor of the City of Emmett Council is hereby authorized and directed to sign the statement of acceptance of said grant offer, entitled acceptance, on behalf of the city. The city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to attest the signature of the mayor, and to impress the official seal of the city on the aforesaid statement and of acceptance, and section three, a true copy of the grant agreement referred to herein, be attached heretofore and made a part thereof, passed by the city council and approved by the mayor this twentieth day of January twenty twenty-five. Gordon Petrie, Mayor. It shows the attestation area for the clerk, and it shows the certificate that says, "I, Lilane Jerome, City Clerk, do hereby certify that the foregoing is the full, true, and correct copy of the resolution, the number which we've stated, adopted at a regular meeting of the city council held on the twentieth of January twenty twenty-five, and that same is now in full force and effect and witness whereof, here unto set my hand and impress the official seal of the city this blank day of January twenty twenty-five. May be done tonight, might be done tomorrow, but it will be done." That is the resolution read in full. And the second was made by Counselor Resinkin, I think I said that. Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. No nays, all ayes. Six ayes, motion carries.
Okay. As you guys all have heard, we did have a sewer line failure earlier this week. We don't really have, we didn't, don't really have the ability anymore to do a project of that size, so we had to go out and hire a contractor to come in and fix it. So I'm requesting a motion to approve Warrington Construction Quote, in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the emergency sewer replacement on South Wardwell.
Mayor?
Yes.
I can make a motion that we approve Warrington Construction Quote in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars for the emergency sewer maintenance replacement on South Wardwell.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the Warrington Construction Bid, to approve emergency funding for the wastewater system failure on Wardwell. The second was made by President Henderson. Is there any further, in the amount of fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, just over my approval. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. All ayes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have the approval of the memorandum of agreement between Gem County and the City of Emmett for the cost sharing of Leeds Online LLC Agency Agreement. Chief Kunkka.
Counselor Mayor, this was something I brought to you a couple, I think it was the last meeting, and Leeds Online was the contract that we got, that now we're in charge of, and you guys approved that. This is just so that the county can pay half of that.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, are you able, is county and you both access that from both departments, or do you have to come over here?
No, no, it's by both. Yep, yep.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum agreement between Gem County and the City of Emmett for the cost sharing of Leeds Online LLC Agency Agreement.
Second.
I heard Counselor Harris first, but President Henderson has a third. The motion is to approve the memorandum of agreement between Gem County and the City of Emmett for the cost sharing of Leeds Online LLC Agency Agreement. Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion, or what is being agreed to? Hearing none. President Henderson.
Yay.
Yay. Counselor Butler.
Yay.
Counselor Denham.
Yay.
Counselor Harris.
Yay.
Counselor Nebiker.
Yay.
Counselor Resinkin.
Yay.
Yay. Six yays, no nays. Motion passes.
Hi. Hi. We'll wait till Mayor gets caught up here.
We have the, approve the first quarter financial report.
Well, good evening, counsel. Here we are in our first quarter of the fiscal year, and it's, I know, it's unbelievable, isn't it? So here is the quarterly report that will need to be published on our website, showing our expenses and our revenues that have come in to date. The target at this point should be about twenty-five percent, so if you look at your percentages, and have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Mayor?
Yes.
I probably ask this every time, but we have more expenditures than we need to estimate, the way the taxes come into us, like on general fund, we receive nineteen, but we spent twenty-six.
And that will counteract as of this week, because I got my first property tax check from, from the county, yeah. And it was a healthy one.
Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the first quarter financial report for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Counselor Nebiker has moved to approve the first quarter financial report for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, and the second was made by Counselor Resinkin. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay. No nays, all ayes. Motion passes unanimously. Approval of address change on twenty-six, six-six, Lake Law Highland subdivision.
Mayor, counsel. Tonight, you have a letter in your packet from Folino Williams, and then a letter with my response in there also, so what I'm looking for is your approval for me to change the address, or if you see any reason I should not change the address.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the address change on twenty-six, sixty-six, Lake Law in Highland subdivision, to either twenty-six, sixty-four, or twenty-six, sixty-eight?
Yes, either of those are available.
Second.
Either one of those are available.
Oh, okay. So we're not doing a specific one, just pick one?
Pick one, yes.
All right. And the second was made by President Henderson. The main motion was made by Counselor Nebiker to approve the address change on two-six, six-six, Lake Law in the Highland subdivision, to either two-six, six-four, or two-six, six-eight. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to change it, too, but that's just me. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any close? No. All ayes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, you happen to be the first one up?
Yeah, I thought I'd just hang out for a bit.
You're the last one on the.
That's why our lovely clerk does it that way.
It's all working out.
That's right.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a question about addresses. The houses at the corner of, the new house at the corner of Fourth and Johns, what is it addressed off of? Is it addressed off of Fourth?
It's addressed off of Johns Avenue, because that's what the deed said, when these people bought the property, and when it was the gas station, that's how it was addressed, so I kept the same address that was on that property.
And the front door is on?
Johns. It is a Johns front door address.
Okay. I wasn't sure. Looking at it, it was like, almost looked like.
It is probably incorrect, but that's, go back to when that was a gas station, before our time, that's how it was addressed. Before your time, even.
I worked out my gas station, so.
Oh, it was? Oh, interesting. Okay.
I was gonna say, he knows that corner well.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I see your packet here, draft short-term rental ordinance and application. What does that entail? What is?
I've been working on an ADU ordinance, which is accessory dwelling units. It's been a hot topic in the community for a lot of years. I've been working on that. I've had it in front of zoning commission, and we've tabled it multiple times, just haven't had time to look at the ordinance. After discussion with that, felt like a short-term rental ordinance would also go hand-in-hand with that ADU ordinance, so it's, goes hand-in-hand for short-term rentals, VRBOs, vacation rentals, that people are Airbnb's that are all over the community already. So I've researched a lot of different communities, and they have standards, and by state statute, we can't deny them, but we can put standards on them that they have to follow. So that's what I'm working on.
So currently, anybody could do that. We're trying to put some guidelines on that.
Correct. Some safety guidelines for emergency contacts, parking requirements, lighting, noise, just some basic things, to regulate them a little bit. We cannot stop them, though.
Seems like standard stuff. How long will it take for you to complete that?
I'm with the ADU ordinance, I'm done with that. I'm just putting together the short-term rental part of it, and I'll have it in front of zoning commission next week.
All right. Mayor?
Yes.
We're all in that same area. What about tiny homes? I know many years ago, we talked about tiny homes, subdivision regulations. Were that intended?
Tiny homes are technically an RV. They're built to the RV standards, they're an RV, to the RVIA, RVIA standards is how a tiny home is built. They're not built to international residential code. Currently, state of Idaho does not recognize them. They did for a little bit, and then they pulled all that language out of the IDAPA rules. As our local jurisdiction, we could recognize them, but we would treat them as an RV.
So if somebody can't live on that amount of residence, because you can't live in an RV, is that correct?
That is correct, unless we change that to allow a tiny home to be as a living space.
Would that blend in with your ADUs at all, or not?
No. I don't even like the, personally, I don't like the idea of it, but that can always be changed by the zoning commission or the city council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just going off of that, so if somebody has an RV park, are they able to put in?
Yes, they could put a tiny home in an RV park, because that's how they are classified as an RV.
So if somebody put all, all tiny homes in there, be a tiny home subdivision?
Tiny home, RV park.
RV park?
Yeah, exactly.
I wasn't sure if there was something that was against that.
No.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, me again. You have my report. Do you have any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You just caught my attention. Is any of the counting for the septic, our impact fees?
Mm-hmm.
Is that moving forward, or are you giving?
It's already set up.
Okay.
Auditors, when they were here, they suggested that I had, but I set it up a little bit differently, so now every impact fee, every impact, fire will have its own fund, just like general fund is number one, roads is number two. So fire will have their own fund, police will have their own fund, and roads will have their own fund. So in budget, you will see it all broken down a little bit differently than I thought it was gonna look like. So that's all corrected, and then the system, and we've already accepted one so far, so there'll be more coming here pretty soon.
So in the tracking of that, that's all behind the door, we don't see any of that tracking, right? We don't see how you're putting it into different departments. That's all done by your office, is that correct?
It comes through our permitting module. So we have a permitting module set up over at Public Works, and so when Shannon enters the permits, when they come to purchase their permits, it all goes into those categories at that time. And then I get the paperwork, I get the balancing, and so I make sure that everything is in there that needs to be in there at the time. Good question. Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Questions?
Hello.
Hello. Our crew is back. They got back yesterday about twelve-thirty. We got the engine back in service. We do have a leak with one of our valves underneath that we're gonna get repaired, but it is serviceable, we can still go up, but we create ice rinks, so we don't wanna do that. So we're still utilizing engine two, and if we need to, we can use the cascade engine as well. And then in a pinch, we could use engine one, but we're gonna get it fixed really quick, so we can have a hundred percent back up and running. I did stop down where the engine three is at in Caldwell today, and talked to the mechanic, and showed him the video of what happened with that piece of equipment. He's gonna put a wrench on it tomorrow, and more than likely, we're gonna get a new motor, not an engine, an engine, sorry, motor in that engine, paid for by California, so, yep. So the pump is, we just had that worked, we put twelve thousand dollars into the pump earlier on the last budget cycle, and now we're gonna have a new motor in that engine, so, yeah.
So it'd be like new.
There's a lot of moving parts between, I hate to say that it's, it's a hundred percent, but it'll.
It's closer.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big purchase right there, so. Other than that, we're getting some radios repaired, that'll be paid for by the deployment. Stand for any questions.
Mayor? Kurt, I noticed on your, you said you had fifty percent on completion on a training area.
Mm-hmm.
Are, you already have an area for that?
Yep, we're at the wastewater treatment plant.
What are you looking for as far as stuff, equipment? Because I was at Gowan Field the other day, and there's a few friends there, and they're revamping some of their fire training area and that, and I didn't know what kind of equipment you're looking for.
I will get a list, a dream list to you, so.
You're serious?
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not kidding either.
They usually send it to the dermal lot, they call it, you know the dermal lot, so, and then they send it to Barstow.
No.
So.
We'd like to say no.
If that's something that we can use, and I can convince them to let us have it.
That's why we're at fifty percent, you know, we've been constantly chiseling away at it, and we went before council that county fires also saw that it was coming along, and said they wanted to jump in, so we've been using grant dollars. Very little of the general fund has been used to build this, I mean, very, very little, if any. It's all been grant and donations and things like that. We have had to turn some donations down, because we just don't have a semi-truck to grab stuff, but.
Yeah, I saw a lot of stuff that they were getting rid of.
Yep. We just wrote another grant, and it got, we're gonna be building a roof prop out there, so firefighters can be up on a roof, and they can be cutting holes and stuff like that, to kind of lay out the gases inside, so that's one thing that we got.
I'll send you the list, Counselor. Whenever you can get it.
Yeah.
I have another meeting with you here in two weeks.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
And seeing with that, the train facility, the county deployed a door prop, new door prop to set off that gas, so it's great to see the city fire and county fire working together, the gravel, everything, you know, they're doing a lot of work together, so. And then one more question I have for you, Chief, is I was told, even though your trucks out of California, as you're operating now, you have issues, they will still repair those issues for quite a while, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Correct, yeah. So we're going to get a full service done on the engine, engine one. I contacted Hughes Fire Equipment today, they're the ones that service Pierce in this area. I'd like it to get, you know, not that Tim doesn't do a phenomenal job and I, if he has time, then I'd use him because I don't want to have to drive a piece of equipment all the way to Boise, but if he's, can't get in right away, then we want to get it down to Hughes and have it serviced down there. Because it's timing. We really want to get this stuff pushed through to California as quick as possible. So getting engine three back up and operational within a couple of weeks, that's what we're hoping for. I know that cross your fingers in your eyes on that one, but we're hoping to get all this done so we can get all those receipts submitted so we can make the city whole with all the labor which we just, we just paid these guys, so.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alice.
Good evening, mayor and council. You have my reports. Do you have any questions for me?
You're good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Police.
Councilor and mayor, you do have my report, but before we get to that, I've asked Sergeant Leatherman to come here today and he is going to talk a little bit about our new motorcycle program that we have started.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah, cheers.
Let me turn this off because I can't tell if it's the voices in my head or the radio. So for about seven years now, since I've been here, I've been quite the pain in Chief Kunkka's behind about getting motors. And about three and a half, four weeks ago, chief gave me a call and said, hey, I got an email from Garden City saying they're pretty much giving away two motorcycles. First one's a two thousand nine Kawasaki Concourse fourteen hundred, it's a practice bike, so I don't know if you guys see me riding around town in my silver one, exact same model. The other one's a two thousand twelve Kawasaki Concourse fourteen hundred and it is fully outfitted. The only thing we have to do to it is put on a radio and decals. And it has fifteen thousand miles, which for two thousand twelve is nothing, it's not even broken in yet. Best part about it is when I said they gave it away, they pretty much gave it away, it's just under three thousand dollars. So we have the bikes in hand, they're sitting over in a secure area and I'm going to start working on getting the decals off. I've already been in contact with Signs, et cetera, who does our decals for patrol cars and they're going to get us a quote for it. Questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that all set up with radar and everything on it?
It is fully outfitted. It has radar front and rear, all the lights, mag charge, mag light recharger, baton holder, lidar holder, everything's on it. And everything's working as advertised.
Mayor, one more.
Yeah.
Can you inform everybody your history?
Oh, yeah, no, I was, usually start off with a joke from Steve Mark, but anyways, so I've been out in Emmett for seven years now. Before that, I was California Highway Patrol, where I worked LA and Riverside for about ten years and I was a motor officer for some time there before I blew my arm out on the Harleys because nobody likes Harleys.
Mayor?
Yes.
So just cut up here, I see small department, I don't see many small departments having that. I know they've had one in the past in the city of Emmett, that's why injuries and stuff like that's up here. Plus, is there a training program to go through, motor endorsement?
Yes, sir. So me and chief already talked about this. Obviously, you have to have your motorcycle endorsement. I've been in contact with about eight different agencies and they are ecstatic that we have a motor program now. We will start training with them and then once I'm completely healed, I'll go through the either ISP or Boise Police Department two-week motor course and then continue with annual training after that.
Do you anticipate multiple officers doing this or just selected few?
I'm, right now, chief has said we'll start off with two. As of right now, I'm the only taker on it, but I have put it out there and I've also brought up with chief that if officers don't have their motorcycle endorsement yet, we do have that practice bike and once we get her cleaned up and ready to go, we can offer that bike to them to practice, to get their motorcycle endorsement, and then to continue on into the motor program.
And I presume the policy will have.
I'm writing that up now.
Have a Ford or car on so they can transport on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the initial use for the motor is going to be escorts and parades. We understand that's going to take a while to get to where we're doing traffic with that, but, and then you're talking about every, everyday, regular use of one. I don't know how, it'd be down the road when we have enough staffing to be able to support that, yeah, for sure. Have any more questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have to ask time too. Do you know where we're at for the road signs for the roundabouts in pure sense? We pass that ordinance, I, you know, it's even worse than before. People's speeds are going faster, not, you're the person on the left. You were going to work on, so you signage for those?
Um, I was not, but the roads department, in fact, we talked about them today and I don't know if Mr. Freemeyer wants to talk about that, what we decided to get, but he, he does have an answer for you of the signs there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Your, your domestic violence car looks nice out there.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Freemeyer.
Hello again. So with the signage on the roundabouts, I contacted our city engineer and had their traffic specialist go over it. And I did get the email from chief on what you guys were actually looking for. There really is no sign that says yield to the left. It just states, and this is in the MUTCD, which is the state standards for signage, it just states yield to traffic in the circle. So we could do that instead of having those circle signs. And then they also suggested maybe putting two hundred feet back. There's a big yellow sign that is the circular sign, but then right below it has the speed limit of fifteen miles per hour. So I, that's probably where we'll go with that. You guys have my reports, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Feel better.
Yeah. Mr. Cadet.
Mayor and council, any questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
The impact fee committee, I see you're on that currently.
Yeah.
Is that a, even when they start collecting impact fees, that's going to go through, are we looking at what we're receiving or?
Yep, so we've been starting to collect the impact fees as of December first. I almost have the entire committee put together to fit the criteria, so we'll be holding a meeting. We have to do an annual meeting at minimum with that committee, so we'll keep.
What's the main purpose of that committee? That to, to see the, what's are the needs of the departments and see if that's justified within the ordinance?
It's general oversight of, I would say it's general oversight of the code of what's, you know, the impact fees, the codes that govern the impact fees essentially. So it'll still be, you know, very much driven by the council and the departments for what those fees are used for. That committee's going to, you know, oversee what those usages would be and essentially fulfill the code. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It is approaching six forty-nine. The chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can you hurry up and make the motion for adjourn?
All right.
Second.
It's moved by Councilor Harris, second by President Henderson to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.